Welcome to San Marino City Club's VODA Forum, September 14th. We're looking forward to a very interesting night with audience participation. Today, we have four individuals running for the council. We'll be answering specific questions in a given amount of time. We have our moderator, famous Mitch Lehman. Mitch will be trying to keep some order on the stage and keep us all in line. He will be asking the questions. He will also explain briefly to you how the program is going to work. They've got some set parameters we'll try to stay within, keep everything moving. Your questions, those of you that grabbed cards when you came in and wrote them up. So it will come around Linda, who's one of our board members, and her husband Hector, who's over here. You raise your hand if you have a card. They will pick them up. And then Casper, who have Wally, and Blood Member Brito will review the cards. And the reason they're doing that is we'll get a lot of duplicate questions. And what their job is to stack them, sort them, and then in some cases, a question that covers a lot of them at the same time. So we'll get started. Bill Mitch?
I'm ready to go.
Let's do like so late first. I'm going to ask troop 351 to come forward and set the colors.
Troop 351, one, two, three.
Color guard, it's attached it. Audience, it's attached it. Color guard.
Forward Mitch.
Color guard, hall. Audience, please join me and recite the place of allegiance. Color guard, please post the flag of the United States of America. Color guard, please post the flag of the great state of California. Color guard, honor your colors. Color guard, reform. Color guard, return to reds. Color guard, all. Color guard, dismiss. Honors.
Thank you, members of troop 351. I say that troop 351 of the city council will be fine. Okay, the candidates drew last to show them that they're seating in presentation order. All responses to you will be timed, and we are timers with green, yellow, and red cards in the front of the stage, right? Presenting their show museum, so they will be handling the show. Thank you. Each candidate will have two minutes to present their qualifications and a reason they wish to serve and want to serve as a candidate. I'll give a wall of that water first.
Good evening, members of the city club. You knew me as a Frenchman's wife because my husband joined city club 2004 and served as the president 2016. He was well-known with his hairstyle and which book was he on the VODA forum before? To many, San Marino former mayor, they knew me because I served on public library renovation campaign, raised some money for our new library in 2003, public safety campaign to raise the money we owe our parcel tax for our police. And the most importantly, I also served as a recreation commissioner for 15 years since 2007. I still remember former city mayor Ray Ray Seaman and Betty Brown encouraged many of the PD Mr. including me, asked us one day, considered Rob for city council. Valentine and Honey in the Middle School parent know me as a PD Mr. and the trystling. But many people didn't know, before I moved to San Marino, I used to work in the New York State Governor's Office as CEO Budget Senator. I managed $22 billion of the Department of Public Health budget. I worked closely with governor, state senate assembly, and most importantly, I really understand budget. When I moved to San Marino, I started my career as the CEO of nonprofit organization. I worked closely with our LA city, county, the municipality surrounding city, California state, and federal government. It was very clear, I have done 20 years community service for our city and our school since 2001, and I have over 30 years executive and budgetary experience since 1994. So I'm ready to take on the city council member's responsibility and role to be your council member, serve our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, city club, Mitch, and all of you for being here tonight. Good evening, my name is John Chow, and I am running for San Rio City Council. I was born just up the street in Pasadena, and I've lived in San Marino since 1997. My two kids grew up here and they attended San Marino schools from K through 12. I feel blessed and grateful to live in San Marino. To show my gratitude, I've accumulated many volunteer hours. I was the community service chair for my son's Boy Scouts troop, 359. I was also on the president's council with the Chinese Garden and under the library during its construction. I served on the board of directors of the Chinese Blood of San Marino, and I was president in 2017. Father remember also working on grand night with Bob Gorgon and his old guard crew. In addition to all of the above, it has been my honor to have been called upon by the city council on several occasions to lend my financial expertise to help the city. My finance background includes an MBA from the USC Marshall School of Business. I was a financial analyst and currently I'm a financial licensed financial advisor at Merrill Lynch. As a subject matter expert in finance, I gladly accepted the invitation from city council to be on the Strategic Financial Planning Committee where we review the financial condition of San Marino. I was called upon a seventh time to be on the Blue Rhythm Committee to help with the re-envisioning of the recreation departments. I was called upon a third time to be on the task force for the San Marino Community Center renovation. I will use my finance experience and knowledge to help guide the city's financial decisions. Thank you.
Hunter, thank you.
Okay, thank you Mitch. Thank you, city club, for hosting this VODA forum. Thank you all for coming. My name is Hunter Chang. My family, I have lived in San Marino for 22 years. I am the husband to my wonderful wife of 31 years, Annie Hahn, the father to our beautiful daughter, Christy, 24 years. So I'm an engineer, and as an engineer, I solve problems. I have retired after a 33-year career in aerospace, where I held a top secret security clearance. I worked on a B2 stealth plowman. I earned a bachelor's degree from UCLA in math and a master's in electrical engineering from USC. Along with designing developing radar systems for aircraft, I also managed million-dollar projects, over billion-dollar programs, projects with budgets the sizes now we know. During my career, I've learned to listen, collaborate with stakeholders, and solve problems. Along with my daytime job as an engineer, I also volunteered for the city and schools for 20 years. I am the current chair of the Public Safety Commission, where we advise the city council on police fire and public works issues. And I was also the former chair of the Traffic Advisory Commission. I'm also volunteer for the schools, starting off with kindergarten, where I won the kindergarten dad award, and won the Halo Award in middle school, and then in high school, participating grad night in all-night security. I was also an executive board trustee for the San Marino School Foundation, and my wife and I are donated to the benefactor level. So with my work experience, volunteer experience, and passion to further serve community, I'm inspired to run for city councils, represent the president of San Marino. My slogan is What San Marino?
Steven?
Hello, my name is Steven Jones, and for those of you who were here two years ago, you may remember that I was sitting up here two years ago, running for city council. Did not prevail, but I had decided to return because of my passion for the city of San Marino and for my passion to give back to the community element. So originally, I native of the ERO city area. I was born and raised in Little Island. I have an MBA in finance from Pacey University in Manhattan. I've spent the first 21 years of my career as a fixed income institutional bond trader. 10 of those 21 years I was on Wall Street structuring and managing mortgage derivative products at the institutional level, working for firms such as Salah Brothers, Lehman Brothers, and Dresner Climate Basin, which is a large international bank based out of Frankfurt, Germany. My work took me to Los Angeles in the year 1999. I was hired by Countrywide to facilitate and develop their Capital Markets Trading Group, which was in its initial stages, operating about a $5 billion portfolio. And over a nine-to-10-year period of my employment with Countrywide Capital Markets, that portfolio I grew to $125 billion of assets under management, mostly mortgage-related instruments. So I have a very passionate background for numbers, ala undergraduate degree from the State University of New York in Management Science and Applied Quantitative Methods, which is very numerous and mathematically driven. I had lived in San Marino only for three years. What brought me to San Marino was the historic nature of the city, the beautiful neighborhoods, beautiful homes. After leaving banking, my last year of banking was with the Federal Reserve Bank. I served as a strategist for the Federal Reserve Bank, and then started my own real estate company. And I love the city of San Marino. I'd like to give back. I'm a member of the Desire Review Committee and looking to take it forward with being a member of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. And the committee has said you're under qualifications for running. You're going, Steve's is so smiling. The only smile bearing in Steve's is lessons. I know the point I have. All right, now you each have a minute to answer this question. Is that right? Yes, okay, and we start with Chan Yan. According to San Marino's housing element, the city has been required by the state of California to allow for the construction of three or nine unit units. How would you as a member of the city council be able to fulfill this obligation?
I think everybody knows that San Marino is a beautiful single housing city. We do not want to have affordable housing, but we cannot, not to follow the state mandate policy. So our current city council has put a proposal up, and I think most importantly, so looking through various units which can be accomplished under the state guideline, including the ADU and JADU, which has less impact to most of our, I would say, the mixed use or in the tall building of affordable housing. So I think most importantly, that to listen to our residents and knowing that we cannot avoid not to follow, but there's a way to work together with the current structure of ADU, JADU, to outreach and educate our community how we can fulfill that requirement by the 2020 number.
Thank you. John?
Yes. The state mayor, they require San Marino to come up with a plan for 397 affordable units, and that's just a plan. Doesn't mean that the city has to develop these units. I read Director Lucido Figueroa's 397-page housing element report, and I would say that he did a good job of modifying it based on comments that he received from the state city, housing and community development from the state of California. The main problem with the first time that they submitted that plan was that they overestimated the number of ADUs in San Marino. So he had to go back and rezone service areas, mainly the C1 commercial areas that would allow for the development of multifamily units. One thing that this president of San Marino can do is apply for an ADU. It doesn't mean they have to build it, but that would help with the numbers. And I would agree that this is not the best place to solve California's affordable housing problem.
Thank you, John. Hunter?
Yes, so the housing element plan is mandated by the state, and we have a plan to identify sites where we might build affordable housing. And I looked at the 300-page report, and most of them are covered under ADUs, about approximately 70%, which is, you know, about half of me, 100 been dealt, about 180 to be built, which is would be good because our families would be living there. It's not strangers. We have built an ADU ourselves, so it's a very definitive. Other ideas, of course, is building the Huntington Southwest, who is actively housing. So bottom line, we have a plan of where we can build housing for not having strangers in the community, and I would support not building home, affordable housing in the neighborhoods where our own houses exist now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Steven?
So the housing element, obviously, is one of the biggest issues facing the city and city council. I think the city council so far has done an outstanding job of proposing a housing element to the state. We are two years behind its due date, so timing is of the essence. We don't want to end up in a situation like La Cañada did, where we end up under the California builders remedy and to lose control over how we want to have affordable housing developed here in our city. I have reviewed the proposal. I do think a lot of the measures are appropriate, the development of housing, some of it at Sonic Canyon, some of the affordable housing at the Southwest Academy, as well as perhaps developing programs incentivizing homeowners to build ADU units, whether that's a financial incentive or some form of other incentive. But the housing element, I think, we're well on our way. I think there's no way of avoiding it. I am not a proponent of a massive amount of affordable housing, but I do think we have to meet the bare minimums of the state, so that we don't lose control over not evaluating it ourselves as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number two, we'll start with John. Question number two, the five-year forecast for the general public safety funds project the nexus of expenses over revenues for the next four years. As a member of the council, how do you plan to address this projected shortfall?
I was on the Strategic Financial Society Committee back in 2018, and we have looked at that, and we can actually create our own projections. So this is not something that is due to me. I knew that the capital approval projects, as well as the increase in expenditures, and how that may not, how our revenues may not be able to keep up with that, would cause problems in the upcoming years. How are we going to deal with that? We're going to have to take a closer look at our revenue projections, take a closer look at our expenditures, and most importantly, take a look at the capital approval projects and decide what, which one of those might be considered discretionary, which one of those that we may have to delay a little bit further. And once those decisions have been made, in conjunction with the rest of my fellow council members and with feedback of the city, we will have to come up with a plan that will help to reduce that surplus deficit that we're facing.
Thank you.
So public safety is definitely one of the most important aspects of the city. As chair of the Public Safety Commission, I recognize what a tough public safety they placed.
Thank you. Steven?
So as a son of a retired police officer from the state of New York, my dad served for 26 years to serve this community. I think that's where my sense of service comes from. I'm a big advocate of our police department and for our departments, because obviously that's what keeps our citizens safe and secure. In the city of San Marino, I can know that this past year was very challenging trying to cover the balance budget for the city. That's part of course, because 90% of our revenues are derived from property taxes, with a relative stagnant real estate market over the past few years because homeowners have not been putting their homes on loan for sale. Our revenue, revenues, our city revenues have plateaued, yet due to inflationary pressures, our expenses with contractors and vendors for the city has escalated. So I do think we would need to take a closer look at where we can scale back. I do not think public safety as far as fire and police is an area that we should look to scale back at. I think there are other services within the city that we could cut back on that would not be detrimental to the safety and security of residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Chan Yan?
I have been the public safety campaign since 2002, for past 32 years. I understand public safety, most importantly, the parcel tax has to be renewed, so please vote. Second thing is that public safety are basic commands under the general fund. That's my backbone in public budgeting. General funds, special revenue, and capital fund cannot be mingled, so we need to focus on how to generate enough funding from general fund program, including risk, public safety. Another thing is that people know that most of probably taxes is the one our revenue coming from, for our city general fund. So we need to closely monitor our property tax. Are we having a more housing transaction, so that will increase our revenue by having a more transaction? So you see a lot of way of forecasting the five years. So with my backbone in public budgeting, I know how to find the way to save, but also identify potential revenue, and most importantly, public safety is so important, please vote for renewing parcel tax.
Thank you. Next question, do you plan on, starting with Hunter, do you plan on voting in favor of Measure M, the continuation of the city's public safety tax? If so or not, please explain the why, the why not.
So schools are so important. The reason we moved to San Marino is for our family, and we must maintain the high quality of our schools, along with the infrastructure, and the schools and properties have a lot of firm maintenance. Just recently, Carver had to shut down for a full day because the air conditioning didn't work, so that affects the kids. So definitely, the schools are part parcel of San Marino. You gotta work together with the school, and I will definitely support any measure that will help updating our infrastructure, and thus keep San Marino, you know, fine, tops, and upstate.
Steven?
So it's a little bit of a controversial topic, most Measure M, Measure S, which was the same measure that was put on the ballot 2020, was defeated. Yet for Measure S, it is the safety tax. So Measure M is, so let's have the rest of the ballot, yes?
Yes.
Or no? Do the public safety do parcel tax, which is about 13?
This is the, it says, the continuation of the city's public safety.
Take from the top.
Sure.
So would you like me to respond to the parcel tax, the public safety parcel tax?
Yeah.
So.
Measure N?
Public safety is a measure S. School bond is a measure N. School.
Okay, so with regard to Measure M, which is the $200 million proposed geo-bond for the school district, it's a little bit of a slippery slope. It was defeated in 2020. We certainly pride ourselves as San Marino residents, I should be looking at the audience as opposed to Mitch. We pride ourselves as being San Marino residents, part of us because our quality is superior to school system. We're proud of the product that we turn out, the students that could turn out, and go on to some of the best universities in the country. So we certainly have a need to maintain the schools. The money is desperately needed. I guess I get a little too sort about how do we go about servicing the interest on that debt, and how is it fairly allocated when it's based off of the sets of property values? If you got a family that just moved in six months ago, what about for $3 million? And they're paying a much higher percentage of the interest on that debt versus a family that's lived across the street for 10 years, bought their home for $1 million. The allocation of the interest on that debt can be overwhelming for some families. Thank you.
Chan Yan?
So Measure N, this is for the school. I do want to say that as a parent who had the kid throughout the year and went Bon Time and Honey in the Middle School, I really appreciate our wonderful education and school district. And we all say that we moved to San Marino not for the ocean view, but for the good school. Opa, I foresee it does need updated, and of course, as a city council, we don't involve the school district, but most importantly, as an individual parent, as a resident, of course, I want our school continue to be good. As that go back to our general fund, because with a good school, you keep the property value, but we have good property tax that'll go to the general bond revenue, that would save a lot of problem about what the shortfall of our budgeting. So we need to continue thinking about that, the property value equivalent with our outstanding of our school. So I personally, I would support, but of course, it's up to all the citizens, up to all the school district parents to decide the future of this measure.
John, if you have a crack, please.
Yes, so this is regarding Measure M, the school bond, and yes, I do support it. If we don't pass this law, the quality of education is going to be negatively impacted. The reason why I moved to San Marino is because of the schools, and I think a lot of you, especially the newer residents, are moving to San Marino because of the schools. The school is experiencing a lot of the firm maintenance. There was a very famous incident just a couple of weeks ago where Carver had to shut down because their air conditioning system failed to operate. We need to make sure that the curriculum at the San Rio schools is not impacted because the school needs to spend money on its building of facilities. We need to make sure that some of the new programs that the Board of Education has put together for the science programs and technology programs, that we have to buy facilities so that the students can continue their learning and to go on to be successful at all.
Hunter, would you like to say something as well?
I think I talked about Measure M again already.
Okay, so we go on to Steven. Excess traffic and speed on residential streets is a concern of residents. What would you propose as solutions to these problems? Sorry, can you repeat that one more time? Yes. Excess traffic and speed on residential streets is a concern of residents. What would you propose as solutions for these problems?
So we certainly have seen an increase of traffic in the city over the years. I think the efforts that the police department has put forward to slow down the flow of traffic by putting speed with dollars out there, I guess you can call them. I've seen an increased amount of police officers that are on the roadways as far as monitoring the speed of traffic. So I think managing the speed of traffic necessarily doesn't reduce the flow of traffic, but makes it safer. As far as, you know, managing the flow of traffic, I don't know that you can really reduce it, but I do think the police department has done an outstanding job trying to make it safer for residents to drive while they're on roads.
Chan Yan?
As a parent, we always watch our kids going to school, we worry about it. But in not every corner, we have a traffic guard to support who are resident. So I do believe that our city needed to put more of the speedy sign, because I know people, once they see the speedy flashing, they will slow down. It is effective. Another thing that the resident living in the Mission District at Las Rovers, we know how fast they drove, they don't even stop. So once I talked to police, they were able to, not only could advise, actually, one day they parked one of their cars to leave their full corner, people all stopped. So you see that there's a lot tactic we can try to use and remind our resident, but the more importantly, we will have outside, and we need to show them that the sign is very clear, the sign had to be obvious. Another thing is that enforcing it, ticketing. If you get ticket, you know that every night comes to San Marino, you need to slow down. I think that's all the way to enforce and that's the need to support our law enforcement to ticket, including our own resident, because we all need to watch out of the safety for our kids, our resident, our senior. We don't want any accident to happen.
Thank you. John?
During my door-to-door canvassing, this is one of the more important issues and more critical concerns that the residents have shared with me. They've cited Sierra Lotte, Delar, Bradbury, as streets where cars are going downhill, they have a lot of momentum, and they're just not slowing there. Nowadays, a yellow light means accelerate, not slow down. I've talked to our police chief, John Contra, about some of the ways that we may be able to slow down the traffic. Stop signs certainly might help. I can remember when I first moved to San Marino, we didn't have any stop signs along St. Alves or Granada, and I can tell you. And I can tell you right now with those traffic circles and other ways to slow down traffic that has been affected. I also breathe that radar signs telling people how faster going is also good indicator of whether or not you're speeding. Because I know I'm not always looking at my dashboard. And I also talked to John Contra about a pilot program that is currently being conducted in Los Angeles, Long Beach and Huelanddale. And I hope that we can get some of those here in San Marino.
Thank you. Hunter?
Thank you, Mitch. So when you talk about traffic, you talk about the three Vs. Veterinary, education and enforcement. I would look at all three elements. Veterinary, we can look at what we consistently do to the roads. Maybe have bulb outs in certain areas where warranted. Education, we educate the public on speeding, post them on the sites, on the billboards, not billboard, signboards. And also enforcement. We recently got two voter officers and we're trying to get a third. That's helped a lot. We also can use D4 vehicles. You see those around town where just they should a police vehicle. Also, we have slowed down speed limits on some of the arterial roads, Sierra Madre from 40 to 30. And also using edge lines to make racing there will pay cost for them too. So we all look at all the three Vs.
Thank you. We have some Washington. Okay, Chan Yan? How would you balance a homeowner's rights with the need to protect our urban forest and historical architecture?
As a 24 years resident in San Marino, the longer you live, you appreciate the character of our city. When my kids come back from college, they feel difference about San Marino, right on the working. So I had to say that any new resident, as you buying a house, you, of course, you want to upgrade, you want to nice, you want to live here enjoying. But honestly, the reason he moved is because the character we have, because the historical structure we have, because the very uniqueness of we, we preserve our city. So I do understand that to balance the homeowner right is important to educate and communicate, really understand what can be diving away that can achieve your goal. Because design review and planning department is doing a very strong controlling. In the meantime, we need to educate our homeowner. We wanted to live here, enjoy here, enjoy our school, but we also want improvement to modernize our life. So I think the balance can be done by doing the understanding and communication, by hundred percent amount of support, keeping the character and keeping our city the way we want.
Thank you. John?
I believe in the property rights of homeowners. But I can also tell you this. During my door-to-door canvassing, I gained a greater appreciation, appreciation for the architecture and the historical nature of our neighborhoods. And I've also come to the conclusion that I do not want to see that destroyed. I don't want to see people coming into the community, especially if they are coming in with a profit motive in mind to look at a house where they can tear it down, rebuild it, and turn it out and sell it and not have any benefit to the San Marino residents, other than the fact that, yes, there might be some additional taxes that is going to be generated from the sale of that property, but at what cost? At the cost of our historical neighborhoods. So we don't want to see that, see that happen. I don't want to see that happen. I will assure you that I will critically look at any proposals, any applications that may impact our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, Mitch. So trees are a bit part of San Marino. I once went to a lecture by Nora Hall. Our urban foresters showed in math of the trees around San Marino and also they were cities. You can tell San Marino is super green. All cities around are light green to white, meaning less tree coverage. So I definitely want to preserve the beauty of the trees. However, having said that, I also respect the owner's right to perhaps modify a tree if it is in danger of falling or in living in danger of burning someone. So I believe it has to be looked on at a case-by-case basis. And that's how I would, I would go ahead and handle that.
Thank you. Steven?
So as a member, the newer member of the desire review committee here in the city, I feel very fortunate to have been appointed to that position by city council. I have further enhanced my appreciation for the landscape of the city of San Marino as well as the historic architecture. I believe we all make the conscious decision and choice to live in this city because of what it offers us as far as architectural integrity, the historic nature of the halls. We all know that there's a lot of history here and we all want to work to preserve it. I pursue myself underwent a one-year restoration of the home that we bought three years ago. It's a 1936 colonial. We did not compromise any of the architectural integrity of our home. So there is a way that you can improve your property. You can bring it up to date without sacrificing the architectural integrity of the home and how it was originally built. And I think that's done by working with homeowners. I feel very privileged, to be honest with you, for me to work with homeowners, to be able to listen to what their needs and desires are and at the same time, try to educate them to try and keep the line with what the city residents prefer in terms of maintaining our architectural and landscape integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Topic is police and crime. So with Chan Yan, do you have any specific plan that, what's that? Have you, John? Do you have any specific plan as to combat crime? Do you support the police and fire bond?
Why that process? Would the police, I support the police and fire, partial tax. Partial tax. Okay. Yes, I did about 100% in support of the public safety parcel tax. If what a lot of San Marino residents have told me, that public safety is one of their main concerns, it will be in their best interest to make sure that public safety parcel tax is approved. It's going to require the two-thirds voter votes yes on that particular measure in order for it to pass. It's been, it's been in the, on the books since 1980. And we do have a gentleman in the audience, Tom Sedley, that's been sharing that, 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 that movement. So thank you very much for everything you've done on it. I do feel that if we don't do it, it's going to not only impact our crime, it's going to impact the police ability to protect ours by us as well as the fire department, because that parcel tax is split between the two entities. And I feel that it is very important for us to maintain that particular quality that we have in San Marino.
Here?
Public safety, I believe, is a top priority for our city. We have, residents want to be safe and feel safe. With public safety parcel tax funds about 25% of the budget for police and fire, about 3.5 million. I would support that as, as all the residents have since 1980. It's allowed a new tax, it's continuation of existing tax. So anything we can do to help our youth officers and firefighters to do crime and help in emergencies, that we should be there.
Thank you. Steven?
So outside of becoming a police officer myself, myself, which I don't plan on doing, as I mentioned before, my father was a retired officer. I have a 21-year-old nephew who's currently a cadet in the New York State Troopers Academy. So the police department and social services is very close to my home. I'm a huge proponent of the public safety parcel tax. As John and Gunter mentioned, it's been on the ballot since 1980. Requires the two-thirds majority to pass. It's passed by an excess of 70% every five years when it comes up for renewal on the ballot. I think we, you know, we all feel very safe and secure here at night in the city of San Marino because of our police and fire departments. And it's what allows us staff some peace of mind as residents. So yes, I'm a huge advocate of that tax.
Thank you. Is this Hunter next? Hunter, you didn't?
Did you think?
Oh, sorry about that. And if that's, sorry about that. My bad.
Ever since I moved here to San Marino in the year 2000, right away I noticed as we have our own police department, our own fire department compared with other city, they don't have that. So in 2002, right after I saw the opportunity, I joined the public safety campaign, worked with Tom Sedley. That has been 22 years. And every four to six years, we have to renew again. And I always told the resident, you want your own city have your own police and the fire, because that three to five minutes matter. But things happen, you want me to be able to support you. You don't want you join least cheap at this one, the other city ticketing. So it's very important to appreciate that. 3.5 million will be generated through the renewal parcel tax. Most importantly, I think you already been paying ever since you bought house. Nothing going to change. Don't think about taxes as additional. This is to maintain the same quality, ensure the public safety of our city. And we should be proud to pay this parcel tax.
Thank you. Chan Yan, who's turn to answer? Okay, Hunter, new question? New question? Okay.
Actually, you want?
Thank you. San Marino's finances have been greatly improved in recent years, but problems always move on the horizon. What potential financial issues do you see coming? And how would you deal with that?
Okay, so I see three issues. Our unfunded pension liabilities, which we are A now, yearly. Family status of $41 million. We stayed down three and a half last year toward this liability. Secondly, it's our deferred maintenance, aging infrastructure. So we got to keep, keep the budget for doubt improvements for our streets, for our list stations, for our city. And then I think another one, of course, public safety need to take care of our police officers and firefighters. You gotta continue the care and feeding. Make sure the pay and benefits are competitive surrounding communities so they don't flee for, for other cities. And so look closer, they really put more challenge.
Thank you. Steven?
I'm going to ask you, please repeat that one more time, Mitch.
Yes. San Marino's finances have been greatly improved in recent years, but problems always live on the horizon. What potential financial issues do you see coming? And how would you deal with that?
Thank you. So yeah, I do realize that it has been a little bit of a challenge, like I said earlier, with the relatively flat revenue base of our property taxes. However, I do believe that real estate market will improve over the, over the next coming years, especially with the reduction as of saying interest rates. So I'm hoping that our revenue stream begins to increase again and, and not remain stagnant. I do believe that what we allocate towards public safety, as Hunter mentioned, is probably paramount for me. Infrastructure is very important in this city. There are some services, one service I think of in particular is that we're very blessed to be able to get street sweeping every other week in my community. If we maybe move the service like that to a monthly service. So there are some areas that maybe we might be able to cut back, but I would never advocate cutting back while really on the core services of just public safety.
Chan Yan?
When you look at the budget, you know upcoming what to forecast. I mentioned earlier, our general fund come from property tax. We really need to watch closely, knowing how our property tax is coming in base decrease. Another thing about pension, I know we paid big pay off the debt, but you haven't looking through the infrastructure of your workforce, your seniority, your pension structure, what is upcoming in the five to 10 years. It's very important to watch closely so in order not to be the shortfall or deficit. Another thing is I utilize the CDPG grant from state and there's many grant that our city should fully utilize or whether we should continue apply for. This is a very important responsibility as the city council. We really need to look through the opportunity, working with the state, whether to take the grant, not to take the grant. Another thing I would say that public safety, we all know is very important. Besides the parcel tax, we need to maintain our workforce, retain our qualified or well-trained police officer. Make sure we don't lose it. So those are the, from the fiscal perspective, as a result of beauty from the city council.
Thank you. John?
When you look at the city's budget, it's $35 million. When you look at the city's expenditures, it's $35 million. So basically, we're at a break-even point right now. What's impacting our expenditures and why that has grown faster than the revenues is because of the inflation, supply chain disruptions and other factors that have greatly increased expenditures at a faster rate than the growth of revenues. Now, revenues about 40, almost 50% comes from our property taxes. That is not growing as fast because of the number of transactions. And so we need to make sure that we look at those numbers very carefully. And talking to our city manager, he said that one of the unknowns that the city is looking at is the capital approval projects that has been on the books for the past five years. Some of those numbers haven't been updated. So that means that we may have some unrealized, unexpected financial issues that the city may not be fully aware of. And that is something that I think that we need to take a closer look at or fully understand what is the financial health of the city.
Thank you. Steven, you have a question. You're next, right?
I believe.
Steven, do you support multifamily housing above businesses on Huntington Drive?
So I support multifamily housing to the extent that we need to for our state mandate. I pride myself on the fact that we are predominantly a single-family residential community. I made that conscious choice to move to the city of San Marino for that reason. So I am not an advocate of putting multifamily housing units on top of businesses on Huntington Drive. Only to the extent that we pick maybe specific locations along Huntington Drive to meet our state mandate for multi, for affordable or low rate of housing. But anything above or beyond that, I'm not an advocate of, no.
Thank you. Chan Yan?
When we talk about our state mandate requirement of affordable housing, one of the proposal from city is talking about on Huntington Drive to have that real estate space able to allow them to do some of the affordable unit in their own property. That's one way we have to somehow put the proposal in, allow state to see we have the intention to resolve this issue. As for whether the property owner of the real estate at Huntington, whether they're going to build or not, is really up to them. I always talk to my resident during the coffee. The United States is not common in this country. So if you are on your property, we give you a coding enforcement, allow you to, doesn't mean you want. So I think another thing we have to really put inside as a resident, we understand city having that goal was called in order to conflict state mandate, but doesn't mean anybody going to build that. So I think not panic, but to understand, we have to fulfill requirement, but we can work slowly and work with resident and working with something very beautiful done in a long run. So there's many way we can work with the state.
Thank you. John?
When you talk about multifamily units above businesses, you're basically talking about mixed-use property. And I would question whether or not something like that is even feasible in San Marino. We don't have large parcels of land that would allow a developer to build these projects where it would make sense economically and properly. So I would say that this is probably not the issue that is really good, that the city is really going to be facing. What the city will be facing though is if we need to build a certain number of affordable housing in order to meet departments of the housing element, those projects in broad life are going to be for multifamily use. And I don't really see how a mixed-use with commercial and residential above that would really help to solve that problem.
Thank you. Hunter?
So this type of housing would have to fix, be part of the whole housing element plan. This is, this is just a plan now to identify the sites where we can build a cycle of mixed-use type building. And I think identifying these sites is, is good. It's that keeps building out of our residential neighborhoods. So we definitely have to look at the whole picture. And that's one of the options on the table. And that's something helping us to ask, but for now, it's a plan to identify the sites where this way be possible. And so that, from that point of view, to help the whole plan get improved on the city. We'll, we'll solve them then. Thank you.
I don't know if there's no questions, are to Dennis and near. Okay, Chan Yan, what will your approach? What will be your approach for improving walkability of our neighborhoods?
Welcome in, he go to Iberdul.
Walkability of our neighborhoods.
Walkability?
Yes, walkability.
How I go?
Dylan? I think one thing about our city is that the efficiency and with smooth transaction without staff, I mean, it is very important. I think city of San Marino has been a long history as a citizen-run city. And we always involving the long-time resident with our city history and our community to really make sure it's walkable. But the most important part is that welcome the newcomer and also the existing resident to work together. And have city management and our city council as a leader working with city department staff. We really need to listen to our city's need. And I was talking to you at coffee. And I was talking to you at coffee, a lot of you would say, oh, I don't understand how to do this, how to do that. And then I realized, actually, on the city website somewhere after Google, I was able to find some of that application out there. So things is there, but the use of that was not accessible or easy or visible. So in order to make things very efficient and capable, I really think that we should including opportunity allow our community member to volunteer, to help the resident to understand the system and to make it easier accessible and it will be more efficient.
Thank you. John, what can the city government do to help increase? Pops, I'm sorry. How do you? Yes. How do you support? My gosh. Walkability.
Walk, this is not hard.
Yeah.
I'm looking for it.
Walkability award, because we had to do.
Walkability.
Walkability is not.
Can you both be our approach for improving walkability of our neighborhood?
Oh, sorry, can I be answered that question?
Go ahead, yes.
Sorry, I thought it's walkability is not walk. One thing we have to do is in our city is there's opportunity for us to give a clean air grant for our state. If we enforce more of the clean air approach, which means more people walk around our community. And that every city has ability, if you set that plan, there's opportunity for us to apply those kind of grant. So I do think that right now we encourage our kids to ride a bike or to school. But same thing how we make sure that we're nearby, nobody going to Lacy Park, you going to any local event, even you are going to Omeo, we encourage that walkable. And there's this, even like the water class recently, they just finished. They did beautifully, they have a shower, a trolley, it was so beautiful. And people are happy to walk around. But I think it's more the make of available approach and allow people feel safe. And we talk about the safety and make sure that you don't feel that car is going too fast. All those is the factor for people willing to walk. Of course, nobody gonna walk when there's a hundred degree. But when it's beautiful, I don't think any people don't walk in our beautiful city.
Thank you. John.
I've been canvassing for the past almost couple of months now. And I could tell you that we have very walkable sidewalks. If you look at the capital approval project budget for the city, two and a half million dollars has been allocated for the, for the repairs of the sidewalks. They're in great condition. What would improve the walkability? I'll tell you what. I was visiting with Mr. Steve Dohlier, and I hope you might be calling me. He has a patio at the front of his house. And I noticed that some of the other homes in that area also has brought patios. I imagine how great that would be if you're walking down the streets and your neighbors are waving to you and saying not. I think that that would be something that would be much more effective when it comes to the walkability of the neighborhood. And I hope that everybody considers that and to all be more neighborly.
Thank you. Bernie Sir, any more of your Dohliers? Hey, Hunter, go ahead.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple of things in this. Walkability is, as John said, distance safety, having sidewalks. I know many of our streets on most of the canvassing don't have sidewalks. And pedestrians are forced to walk on the street. Back in the issue came up on the Public Safety Commission recently, just this issue that cross on where there are no sidewalks. So definitely we look at streets without sidewalks, how we can improve that to improve the walkability. And then secondly, walkability in terms of business environment. It's a, in to be the cities that have businesses with people to walk. So improving the business climate along mission and Huntington, that would also improve walkability on our portal as well.
Thank you. Stephen.
So I think our city does a pretty outstanding job already of encouraging citizens and residents to come out, to enjoy the city, to walk through the neighborhoods. There's certainly a lot of beautiful places I'd pause to look at, your properties. I know personally, my spouse and I walk quite a bit for that reason. I think unlike other cities, we had very good sidewalks. We don't have uprooted sidewalks by tree, tree roots and things of that nature. I think the city is very diligent about making sure that sidewalks are safe for pedestrians. Our well, our roads are also well paved. I know there's a pavement schedule that the city maintains. So I think unlike neighboring cities, we maintain our roadways very well, which all encourages residents to come out. I think the city also encourages residents to not use outlook space. Lacy Park, there's a lot of events always going on Lacy Park. So I think there's a lot of encouragement to get out, walk, enjoy the park. I do think one possible way we could improve would be to add pedestrian flashers on some major roadways, particularly South Huntington, all roadways like maybe San Gabriel, Del Ar, where it might have flashing signals to designate that there's a pedestrian crossing the road to ensure safety of the pedestrian.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna be with John. John, what can the city government do to help increase enrollment in San Marino schools?
Well, the enrollment in San Marino schools is really based on an affordability factor because of the price of housing here in San Marino. With that said though, the city has implemented a legacy program, which has allowed grandparents and their kids come to the, to attend the San Marino schools. I think that that is a good first start. I know that our enrollment has gone up. In fact, the enrollment at both Valentine and Carver is at capacity. I know that the enrollment at the Huntington Middle School and the high school is also increased. And so I'm not so sure if there's anything that the city can do to encourage more students to come in the community. Because students and parents and families already want to come in this community to tend our wonderful schools, which is why it's important to pass Measure N so that we can continue to keep that quality of education at the standards that we expect it to be.
Thank you. Hunter.
So yeah, like John said, legacies, we can have our grandkids come into the schools. I would also look into how we can possibly expand that to maybe have some close relatives. So we at least know the mother's family to also help with increasing enrollment. Measure N, the person talked about, totally support that, have a good facility so that towns would want to enroll their kids here with good facilities. And. Uh, but that's, um, so, yeah, just, that's a.
Thank you. Stephen.
So I know enrollment has marginally been on a decline over the past number of years. I do know the population in this city, if you look at the 2010 survey relative to the Dwight Dwight survey, the city of San Marino, it has decreased, but it's been a minimal marginal amount. I do think that the legacy position of the high school allowing pre-children to attend, because grandparents live in this city, will certainly help. As John and Jennifer both related to that, people move into the city of San Marino because of the fantastic school system. We have one of the best school systems in the state, one of the best school systems in the country. We have a very product of the, very proud of the children at Bradbury High School, one of some of the best institutions in the country. So I know personally in my neighborhood, I see more younger families moving in. Affordability is definitely an issue. I don't know if there's much the city council can do about affordability, but I do know younger families are coming into the city to take advantage of the school system.
Thank you. Chanyan.
I actually think city can do something about enrollment. Because you know people who work in the city, then they can bring their kids to go to our school. John and Conjo's kid go to go to Conny and you know, school with my kid together. So I do agree that, yes, we have legacy plan, we have a grandparent bring their kids. But we can encourage our city employee when we are recruiting, we're looking for the young workforce. Also, most importantly, our business owner, they can have their employees' kid also working in the San Marino and they attend the Rio school. And I think another thing is about that, if we want to attract our city to be very vital, we want a lot of long-time, long-term business owner in our community. And their employees' kid, the owners' kid, they can attend our school. So if we're able to attract these people owning our beautiful city government, we will have the future enrollment for our school. That's one thing you can do. Of course, we cannot reduce the price for whoever to buy, but we can attract the good workforce to work in the city and with their family member to join us.
Thank you. John, the city's general plan is scheduled to be updated. Do you see a need for the new general plan to address environmental issues with the inclusion of the climate action plan?
I'm not so sure that the, that the plan needs to be addressed as far as the city is concerned. The city does have, as we've talked about earlier, already a very supportive program to maintain our ironets or trees and things like that. When it comes to the climate control plan, is what you said, right?
Yeah, that, that, it's see. Do you see a need for the new general plan to address environmental issues with the inclusion with climate action plan?
I think that I don't think that that is something that is necessarily a big part of the overall set of the San Marino. But I will say that the city does have, has applied for grants, has applied and has incorporated electric vehicles and things like that as a part of its overall services that the city provides to the community. So I feel that that's probably about as much as it can do for the time being. But as, at the same time, there is certain state laws that will encourage the use of solar panels and things like that.
Thank you. Hunter.
Yes, so it'd be great if you can do our part in saving the planet. And the options would be to possibly have electric leased vehicles. Where our neighboring cities has converted to all of electric, electric cars of our, they're not polluting, they're very efficient, they're safe, no maintenance, no to no maintenance. So that would definitely help contribute toward our climate issues. And a little in that, just we can see how we can possibly help about safe electricity or get out there, hot days perhaps, and that. And help the grid, the energy grid.
Thank you. Stephen.
So I believe that we all have a responsibility to our environment and to protect it and preserve it for future generations. I think as Californians, we're all conscious of that. I believe the city of San Marino does its best part to try to maintain that ideology. I think through the tree preservation program, I think the tree is very, very, I think the city is very, very conscious of trying to maintain and preserve as many trees and plants, as many new trees as possible. I think that will help keep our environment green and healthy. To Hunter's point, I know that recently the police department purchased electric bikes to facilitate policing our neighborhoods. So all little steps like this make a big difference in terms of keeping our neighborhood and our image of clean and green.
Thank you. Chanyan.
I think environmental action that every city had to do. Not just because we, we want to save the, you know, energy, we be at the city actually using that to save your budget. Because if we have a solar panel to generate electricity for all our facility, we were able to generate electricity for our own city's use, right? That would reduce our utility cost. And same thing is that the tree preservation is also protecting our environment. Another thing is that we need to encourage our resident to really utilize other, you know, the environmental save of a no medicine vehicle, but mostly how to save that tactic is that in our fault. One thing about San Marino we cannot exit is that, you know, climate change affecting everybody. We need to prepare for disaster. We need to prepare, make sure our water tunnel is clean and our tree stream. Everything actually is part together as a environmental plan. It's not just simple as a solar plant or anything. It's overall the five-year long plan. And that's something we have to work together with our state.
Thank you. Chanyan, whose questions? Thank you. Hunter. Hunter, we work with other cities such as Huntington Beach who are developing strategies to protect the integrity and culture of our city. Can we leave the question? Will you work with other cities such as Huntington Beach who are developing strategies to protect the integrity and culture of our city?
Well, not quite sure what we're doing with Huntington Beach. But I, I would be open to listening to what they're doing. Talk about what we can agree on, what common ground we have once work was up. And, you know, collaborate, see, see what's solutions you come up with that are beneficial to San Marino. So that's, that's most of that.
Thank you. Stephen.
So I think many Southern California cities probably face many similar issues. San Marino is probably no different than Huntington Beach, other cities. I think collaboration is always important. I think, you know, you can always stand to learn from the other community that's going through something that our community might experience. You don't always have to act on what they're doing or follow what they're doing. But I think working together with other cities that have similar issues as San Marino is confronted with, I think collaborating and listening and being open-minded and gaining ideas and perspective is always beneficial.
Thank you. Chanyan.
I'm guessing this question is because you know Huntington Beach City, five is a California state is to each other. I think that's why this question is answered. But I do think that city of San Marino, we do not want to spend our energy to fight lawsuit against our state government. We need to find the best way to preserve our way, but negotiate, working closely and how to monitor our situation. It's not just fighting. Fighting doesn't go anywhere. We need to negotiate and work together. And the city of San Marino, we cannot extend from whatever state mandate. However, city of San Marino, we together, actually, our council is already working that, finally try to adapt as possible we can. But we don't have the instrument right away, right? There's many way to do not to talk about it. But our state need us to submit a written proposal. So I want to direct against to this question. Once again, Huntington Beach City is fighting, I know that. But the city of San Marino want to do the same approach? I think it's up to our resident to tell our council, are you ready to fight for that? You will use your city money to do the lawsuit against the state? So I think that's very important decision made by our citizen.
Thank you. John.
You know, there's an old saying that you can't buy city hall. I think that you also can't buy the state. And so I think that it would not be in the best interest of, of San Marino to partner with another city in order to fight against whatever mandate that they put against, put up Mesa to come in for the plan to, to beat. I think that a better solution to that would be to have better representation at the council of governments, at the Southern California Association of Governments. Because these are governing bodies where San Marino can make his voices heard and let them know if there is something that we agree to or something that we don't agree to. Because otherwise, they will, they will make the decision on our behalf. And so I feel that that is something that may be more effective than to partner or to team up with another city in order to, to combat separate.
Thank you. Hunter. You have your answer for the question. No, no, wait. Okay, thank you. So now we are on closing statements. Sure, go ahead. Chanyan, start.
Thank you so much for coming tonight and together, San Marino boulder and candidate. We are preparing a better future for our city. My husband Frank was a Los Angeles Superior judge. And he was the one encouraged me to run for the city council because he knew my passion and my sphere in topic budgeting and community service. And he saw me always run tight to volunteer myself, even though I was so busy as a career woman and Uber mom for my children. At this year is a perfect timing because my daughter is going to college to do office. So we took our campaign picture flyer on July fourteen in front of the Poppy Library, which is a place we volunteered together. I pulled my candidate statement at the city clerk on July fifteen. And Frank, Mathani and Natalina signed my candidate petition. Frank was ready to join me to knock the door, recognize was a friend and neighbor. Unfortunately, he passed away in Huntington. I could chose to sustain my campaign, but my children want me to continue because they want me to carry on my husband's legacy as public servant. So with my own hundred percent dedication, I'm adding my husband's another hundred percent dedication. If I'm elected, you will have a two-hundred percent dedicated city councilwoman who can take our city budget fiscal management quickly and effectively. And I'm always will listen to you and your concern, your suggestion. I vow to represent you and your family and I'll advocate on your behalf if I'm elected. Thank you so much for giving this opportunity.
Thank you. John.
You can't. Yeah. Just the words.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Yes, you said two minutes.
Two. Yes.
Try not to go. Thank you, city club, Mitch, and all of you for being here tonight. IPO experience will be crucial in this election. With two council members set to term out after nine years each for a total of eighteen years, and that includes Steve Talts here in the audience. Thank you, Steve, for your nine years of service to the city. And another council member, Rachel Mami Shepherd, possibly two years from now, with another nine years of experience, will be losing a significant amount of institutional knowledge. As I mentioned earlier, I've been honored to have been appointed three times by city council to leverage my finance background, experience and teamwork skills on the Strategic Financial Planning Committee, the Blue Ribbon Committee to re-envision the Recreation Department, and the Task Force on the renovation of the San Marino Community Center. Our city needs an experienced financial professional on the council. You may have heard today about the Federal Reserve's decision to cut interest rates by fifty basis points. What does that mean to our city, to our forecast, to our budget and to the unfunded pension liabilities? These are matters that I am able to lend guidance, experience and expertise to help our city make good, fiscally responsible decisions. Please vote for me, John Chow. I look forward to serving the citizens of San Marino once again, this time as a member of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Hunter.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you, city club, for hosting this forum. I kicked off my date for city council on May sixth of this year. Since then, I've earned the endorsements of many former mayors, prominent community leaders. I've knocked on thousands of doors in hopes of meeting you and learning about their concerns. Time to time again, what I've heard over and over is residents want to be city and feel city. And as chair of the Public Safety Commission, I couldn't agree more. Need to take care of our police and firefighters. We need to increase grassroots participation in crime fighting techniques such as neighborhood watch. And in order to reduce burglaries, we need to increase our installation of all security systems, which currently is under fifty percent, I believe. And also expand use of video drone technology and educate residents on safety and emergency preparedness. Which I made public safety my main for number one priority. Our excellent schools, main reason we moved to San Marino. And in my twenty years of community involvement, come to know many residents and their issues, all the members of the school board, school district, and decided to hit the ground ready with them. If I'm elected, I will advocate for semi annual meetings with the joint council, school board and school district to to learn about the issues, work together, synergy to keep San Marino unified tops in the state. As an engineer for thirty three years, I solved problems. Similar to the many different subsystems on an aircraft, San Marino is the pride of many entities. We're one police, one fire, we're public works, one school district, one park, one library, one zip code. So independent on each other. So in order to fly this aircraft, so to speak, let's listen to each other, collaborate and work together as one San Marino. I'd you to visit my website at worldforhunterchain.com to learn more and hope to hear your support and endorse it on November six. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
So I would like to thank city council for bringing together this forum. Again, I thank you to those residents who came out to meet the candidates and listen to what we got to say. Let's face it, we are missing or going to be losing tremendous talent with Steve Talts leaves at the end of this row, as well as Steve Wang. So we have some great big shoes to fill. I think we have four people up here with very, very ready intentions. I would love to be given the opportunity to serve the city because I think San Marino is a very unique city to live in. I feel very humbled to be able to be a part of the community. I look at it as I embarked on my city campaign two years ago. I didn't give myself very good odds of prevailing back then, and I did not. But I used it as an opportunity to get out and to meet residents. And since that time, I've been continuing to meet residents, to talk with people, to listen to what their concerns are, to what they expected their city council and their leaders and what their hopes are for the future of San Marino. My twenty one years of experience as a Wall Street bond trader and managing a substantial portfolio in excess of a hundred billion dollars of assets under management, has taught me a lot about numbers, financial modeling, financial engineering. I developed tremendous, tremendous leadership skills over a forty plus year career. I've been my own business owner for the past fifteen years. So I think that there's a lot that I can contribute to the city, to work with the residents, to help them be proud of their city, to help them feel safer in their city and for all of us to move the city forward. I think one of our biggest things that we're facing around now is this housing, housing element and getting housing element passed and signed off on by the state and putting that behind us and moving forward. And I look forward to meeting with more of you over the next month. And I would love to secure your vote on November sixth. Thank you.
Four years. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you. I forgot to mention earlier, I apologize, I am B. Blackler, I am the president of San Marino City Club. And this is our hosting of this tonight. And I'd like to first off thank the members of the board of directors and past presidents who helped put this together and make it possible tonight. And thank you for your work, all of you. And to our potential candidate, or not candidates, but potential city council members. We wish, SimPUB wishes you the best of luck and a lot of hard work ahead of you. And I hope that all our subs bid for. So for those of you, there are, there's a flyer outside, the San Marino Women's Club, along with the Women's League of Voters, is putting on a forum for measure to pro and con the different measures that are coming up on the ballot for the state of California. That's happening October first, I think at six forty five, right over here in the community center. So that should be a pretty interesting informational, informational program as well. And the last thing I want to say is, well. I'm sorry, Mitch was standing behind me, of course Mitch always does a great job. This is fabulous. Thank you.